Call to order, a public hearing pertaining to the Amendment Two to the annexation agreement regarding the thirty-six acre property at the northeast corner of Towanda Avenue and Beach Street, having to do with the Carden Springs PUD. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to that? Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Amendment Two to the annexation agreement regarding the thirty-six acre property at the northwest corner of Towanda Avenue and Beach Street? I'm required to ask this question three times in a public hearing, so is there anyone here wishing to speak to Amendment Two to the annexation agreement regarding the thirty-six acre property at the northwest corner of Towanda Avenue and Beach Street? Please call a roll for an adjournment.
Mayor Kuz?
Here. Aye.
Mr. Preston? Mrs. Lorenz? Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberge?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Call to order, a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please call a roll.
Mayor Kuz?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz? Mr. Byers?
Here.
Mr. Roberge?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States stands under God.
We begin the meeting tonight with a public comment, and there are a fair number of public commenters here tonight. The rules for public comment, and I'm going to be a little stricter about those because we do have so many speakers tonight, is we just need you to state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comment. Our first speaker is Luke Funfar. You are the first speaker, sir.
Any one of these will do?
Any one of those will work.
All right. My name is Luke Funfar. I live in the Savannah Green subdivision. Proverbs chapter twenty, verse twenty-five warns against making major decisions without counting the cost. You're about to make a major decision that will permanently affect several neighborhoods and thousands of residents, families, and registered voters. Before you decide, I urge you to count the cost. The Planning Commission's recommendation has failed to count the cost. Traffic impact studies were done with data captured during the COVID lockdowns, then redone with data from two thousand and fifteen. Light pollution to homes from vehicle headlights was not counted. Safety hazards to children playing outdoors were overlooked. The Planning Commission listened more to flawed studies than the real experts, the people who actually live in these neighborhoods. I'm sure that the town conducted studies when it decided to build the Constitution Trail extension through One Normal Plaza and Savannah Green. I'll bet that none of them suggested that it would create noise pollution and violence. Before the trail opened, life on my street was peaceful and quiet. After it opened, regular outdoor parties in the park replaced that with crowd noise, loud chanting, and loud, sometimes profane, music. Attendees often parked their cars in Savannah Green, clogging our streets. On route back to their cars, they disturbed our peace and property, littered, and started fistfights in my neighbor's front yard. Nothing like that ever happened before the trail extension was opened. If a bicycle trail can conceal those costs, imagine the costs concealed within this development. Imagine what will happen if Young America flips these apartments into student or section eight housing. I imagine louder, larger, and more frequent gatherings in the park. I imagine violent demonstrations that pose a danger to our lives, property, and our fine police officers. I imagine drug deals and other crime taking place under the cloak of night in One Normal Plaza. I imagine our neighborhoods turning into noisy, unpleasant, violent, and dangerous places to live. As elected officials, it is your duty to protect citizens from crime and preserve the integrity and property values of our neighborhoods. A vote in favor of this proposal is tantamount to dereliction of duty. I implore you to either vote against the rezoning proposal or to postpone the vote until you have accurately counted the cost. Consider the potential costs to your political careers as well. We, the people, don't take kindly to threats to our homes and families, especially when they come from elected officials who are supposed to protect us, not exploit us. Some of you have forgotten that you work for us, not the other way around. Voter apathy has enabled you to hold and wield your power unchecked, but not unnoticed. This town is not your personal fithem, and we are not your lowly serfs. You are public servants. You answer to us. We, the people, gave you your power. We, the people, can take it back. So, like Beyonce said in one of her biggest hits, "Don't you ever for a second get to thinking you're irreplaceable." Thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is David Snyder.
Yes, my name is David Snyder. Good evening. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed zoning change on the property of Beach and Shellborne in Normal. My family's lived in a home at that area since two thousand nine and is very well versed with the positives and negatives of this area. I will discuss three points as to why a decision to rezone this property would be a bad idea. The addition of apartments and townhomes on the property of Beach and Shellborne will lead to lower property values for us who already live here and bring more transient population into our neighborhoods. One need only look at Savannah Green Development off Shellborne to see what will happen to new townhomes in twenty years. Savannah Green started off with nice, new, affordable townhomes and condos along Shellborne around the year two thousand. The first iteration of buyers and renters took good care of their new homes, but now on the third and fourth iteration of owners, we have trashed properties with missing siding, leaking roofs, unmaintained lawns, overgrown trees, trash in both the front and backyards, and hundreds of cars with nowhere to park. I work every week with long care on these homes and can attest to the deplorable conditions of almost all of these homes. My fear is that the same thing will happen at the proposed property managed by Young America and is already happening at three hundred Shellborne, an old property now managed by Young American. Number two, traffic. As has already been stated, traffic figures given to the council were taken from a two thousand and fifteen Illinois Department of Transportation report. The report had five thousand nine hundred average daily traffic on Shellborne and seventeen hundred on Beach. This information is ten years old and no longer correct since there has been more development in Savannah Green and several townhomes added on Henry and a reopened set of apartments at three hundred Shellborne since then. The more recent traffic report is not significantly different and only deals with traffic at the intersection of Beach and Shellborne. That's not where the traffic problems will occur. The real problems will be on Towanda and Fort Jesse and Towanda and Shellborne. There are two hundred and seventy housing units proposed. If there's just one car per unit, that would add almost three hundred cars to the roads at peak traffic times. Current wait time at the left turn from Towanda to Fort Jesse can be up to three traffic light changes long and be three to five minutes wait. I sent pictures to the council, if you can see, both looking north and south on Towanda at four forty-five on an average weekday. Imagine what the wait time will be if we added even a hundred cars at peak times. Towanda onto Shellborne in the evening, which is a two-lane left turn, will come to a halt during rush hours with the addition of this many families. And finally, number three, property upkeep. Young America has been involved with student housing at ISU for years, and students have complained about how they manage profits for just as many years. I again sent some links and comments from students over the years for Young American to the council. I am also concerned that this new proposed multifamily development could potentially bring in students-
Mr. Snyder, you've hit your three minutes. If you could just sum it up very quickly.
In summation, we don't want the zoning change. You do. If these were proposed at Hawthorne or other wealthy developments in town, it never would have come to be counsel to be considered. If you really want to build more low-income housing via apartments, we suggest building used units where apartments already exist, on the west side of town, in the open land available near Heartland Community College and Normal Community West High School. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gretchen Knapp. I've lived in the town of Normal for over twenty-five years and worked here, and I love the town. I also know that the town has an acute housing shortage and that we have more people coming into the town. I am in favor of this development, and particularly because it is infill development, infill housing, which sounds originally like some sort of terrible dental work, but actually means that homes are being built on areas that are not otherwise being used for housing within existing neighborhoods. It's about making the better use of the infrastructure we already have. It's tax efficient. It's smart, and it makes room for thinking about how to budget for long-term maintenance as well as short-term building. Infill provides different types of housing, and as we see, it'll be a combination of townhomes and apartment buildings. I live in a neighborhood that has apartment buildings and townhomes, single-family homes, both rentals and owner-occupied. These townhomes and apartments were going to be used by seniors like me who want to downsize. It's going to be used by young families who are just starting out, maybe they have one kid or that one is on the way, about local workers who want to live near their job. Over half of the people who live and work in Bloomington, Normal, live outside of McLean County. A lot of our Rivian workers come from either Peoria or Champaign, and they would prefer to live here, and we would prefer for them to pay income tax and property tax here. The new development on existing land means more tax revenue without extensive new infrastructure. Infill helps reduce the housing pressure by keeping existing rates from going up as a rule. And if done thoughtfully, it doesn't mean skyscrapers in the suburb. Infill keeps from sprawl. Sprawl means taking our rich farmland out of production, and I don't want to do that, and I think most people don't want to either. So, in sum, this infill housing development is about using what we've already built to support more neighbors, more choices of housing, and more resilience for our community. It's fiscally responsible and is deeply human-centered, building a stronger community. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Hall. I live at seven oh six South Fell, and I've been there for thirty-some years. I'm here tonight in support of the resolution regarding the Bird City Illinois application. I'll start by commending the town of Normal for many purposeful actions to promote bird habitats and make this a welcoming place for our year-round and migratory birds. Habitat loss across Illinois is real. Bird population decline is real. Millions of birds traverse Illinois during annual migrations, and our town provides accessible places for these feathered travelers to rest and refuel. In a landscape dominated by farm fields, our parks are an oasis. I thank the town leadership for prioritizing native shrubs and trees instead of exotic ornamentals and for improving existing parks to provide water and shelter opportunities. In doing so, you create a healthy ecosystem that allows all living things to thrive and enjoy outdoor spaces. One of the groups that benefits from these efforts is bird watchers. The Grand Prairie Bird Alliance reaches over seven hundred households with their newsletter and hosts public bird walks and programs throughout the year, but thousands more residents are casual observers, delighting in the flash of red as a cardinal sings in the shrubs or visits a backyard bird feeder. I wholeheartedly support the pursuit of Bird City Illinois designation, which acknowledges important work already accomplished and signifies commitment going forward. The town's purposeful planning and collaboration with local conservation organizations will enhance the quality of life for taxpayers and visitors, even those with feathers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Rucker.
Hi, my name is Beth Rucker, and I'm speaking to the opposition of the rezoning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at this evening. As I come before you, not just as an individual homeowner, but as the voice of our entire neighborhood that feels betrayed by this proposition. Mayor Kuz, on the town of Normal's official website, you proudly state that you work to maintain the integrity of our older neighborhoods. I am here today to ask you respectfully but firmly that you stand by those words, that you help to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood, Colley Ridge. We, the homeowners of Colley Ridge, bought into this community under the binding covenant that guaranteed that all remaining land would be, in our subdivision, would be developed into single-family homes. That was not just a preference. It was a contractual promise. Now, we are being told that the promise that might be broken and that land could be used for something else entirely different. Let me be clear. It's not a technical amendment. It's a betrayal of trust and a breach of contract. We relied on when we made the most important financial decisions of our life. Within an hour yesterday, I gathered over eighty signatures from my fellow neighbors in the Colley Ridge subdivision who feel the same way, who believe that the council must stand with the taxpayers and the residents and not with the developers. That solidarity speaks volumes. We did not stop there. This morning, we submitted a notarized document to the recorder's office, signed by those over eighty residents of the Colley Ridge subdivision, the majority. We are rejecting the waiver and modification to protect the covenants related to Colley Ridge subdivision, which was filed on July twenty-second of twenty-four by Don Frankie, the original developer. Per a majority of the homeowners of Colley Ridge, we reinstate the original clause two of the undeveloped property, and the developer can no longer make those modifications. That document reflects the clear will of our neighborhood, and it must be honored. So, tonight, we are asking you, the leaders that we elected, that we voted to elect into office, that you do what is right, enforce the original agreement, support the homeowners, uphold the integrity of our neighborhood. Mayor Kuz, city council members, it is the moment to choose the people of the town of Normal over private interests, a moment to honor your words, sir, and defend the foundation that this town was built on: trust, accountability, and community, and to serve as an opportunity to return to those values. We are watching, and we are expecting you to voice, to understand, and hear our voice. Thank you for your time.
We'd ask that we stay neutral on the comment, please. No applauding, no reaction if you hear something that you don't agree with. We just ask you to honor that. Our next speaker
Good evening. As you said, my name is Carl Seela. Most of you know me. Many of the audience do as well. I'm known for being rather blunt, perhaps even offensively so at times, so I'll keep up with the tradition. There have been and probably will be other speakers here that are asking you to do the right thing, that are asking you to act in the citizens' best interests. I actually don't know all of you, so I can't say all of you, but I know at least some of you don't really care about the citizens' best interests unless it aligns with yours. So, that's what I'm here to talk about, is how voting no aligns with your best interests. First off, the impacts to you as far as reelection. Ignoring the developments' covenants as they currently stand is not a bad idea. Will residents of other developments take kindly to making official normal policy that their covenants are not binding when it regards to their property rights? Further, if you vote no, you can brag about actually doing the right thing and looking out for the little guy, which, you know, looks good on your next reelection campaign. There are also impacts to the current developer and perhaps the town. Ignoring the current covenants as they stand opens them to potential lawsuits and perhaps the town. Then, there's also the impacts to future developments, which I know, you know, the town is interested in future development. Do those developers want to tell future buyers that town policy is that covenants are for buyers only and not binding to the developers? Or do they want to risk lawsuits for failing to disclose this official town policy or misleading the buyers that the covenants actually grant them rights? Side note, based on other speakers here, infill development is indeed a good thing, but inappropriate infill development is not. If you want to put in single-family houses here, I don't think anyone here who's talking against it would have the slightest complaint against it. And lastly, giving a no vote gives you even more opportunity to talk trash about me. I'm saying nasty things about you, and clearly, I'm wrong if you vote no. So, again, you can do the right thing. You can look out for the citizens' best interests, or you can look out for your own best interests, but all of them lead to a no vote. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Patrick Hovin.
Hello, Mayor Kous and council. My name is Patrick Hovin. I am the CEO of the Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council. Back in 2022, we commissioned a housing study that showed that we had a pretty big shortage of over four thousand homes. Since then, those numbers were based off of data that was from 2020. We went ahead and thanks to the town of Normal, added close to nine thousand jobs at Rivian. They just announced another five hundred with R2 and another one hundred with the supplier park. Bottom line is, you can't add that many jobs and not support it. So we are definitely short on houses. I did get a question about commuters. Back in 2019, the commuter is made up of about thirty-seven percent of the workers that were in our community, at over thirty thousand people. The latest numbers of 2022 were about thirty-three thousand, or about forty percent of our workers. So we're getting more people commuting in, which means that they're taking those paychecks back to their communities. I'm for housing. I am for retaining some of these paychecks back in our community so we have more disposable incomes for our restaurants and our retailers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noah Tang.
Hi, my name is Noah Tang. I teach high school social studies here in town, and I'm a resident here for about ten years. Just like Patrick Hovin just stated, Bloomington Normal is in fact in a housing crisis. It's plain and simple. I know how difficult the economics behind real estate development can be as the president of the local chapter of Strong Towns as well as a board member of the Bloomington Normal Community Land Trust. In order for more housing to be constructed in our community without state or federal subsidies, people need to do the math to ensure that more housing can happen. Single-family housing is by far one of the least cost-efficient ways to add housing on infill lots, not only for the developer but also for the municipality once they build the infrastructure needed to service those areas. When you add new units without expanding the city's footprint, you help meet demand and help basically release upward pressure on rents. And we have seen this in various places nationwide. According to NPR, the Texas Tribune, Bloomberg News, simply because the city of Austin added so much housing supply between 2023 and 2025, the average rent actually declined twenty-three percent. I think it's also important when we're talking about efficient land use. Concentrating growth where services already exist protects greenfields and preserves open space at the city's edge. Like previous people have already said, we live in some of the most fertile farmland in the entire country. Take note who attends these meetings. As Atlantic writer Jerusalem Dempsey states, "The downsides of new development tend to be very localized, like slightly higher traffic or construction noises, something that is easy to unite against." By contrast, the beneficiaries of this housing project do not live here yet and cannot organize effectively. We need to think of the people who the excess development will house, your future neighbors, the person sitting next to you in church, your children's kindergarten teacher, and hospital staff. I urge the council to approve this development, but more importantly, take a look at the zoning code in the community as a whole to allow for more incremental growth. I live in a part of town where there are single-family residents mixed with small apartment houses, and the only real way you can tell the difference is the number of mailboxes on the side of the building. To truly build a strong town, we need to allow fellow citizens to be empowered to add a unit on their own lots for their parents as they age. Let the young upstart entrepreneur build that four-unit apartment house he'll live in to pay off his student debt and start a business, and go back to a time before we prioritize only single-family homes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kylie Schumaker.
My name is Kylie Schumaker, and I am ten years old. I live right by the open field we are talking about tonight. And I've talked to some of my friends in the neighborhood to see what they thought about all these new apartments and cars. Here's what they said. My friend Jordan loves to rollerblade, and she told me, "Sometimes I go a little fast and accidentally rule towards the street. With so many more cars, I'm scared I'll get hit." Mrs. Smith, is this what you want for our neighborhood? For kids to be scared to even play outside? And my other friend Kinley, who lives across the street, loves to play pickleball in her driveway. She said sometimes when we're playing, the pickleball goes rolling into the street. It's usually pretty safe to get it now, but with tons of extra cars, it'll be way more dangerous. Mr. Preston, is this the kind of change that makes our town better by making it less safe for kids? My little neighbors, Daphne and Clark, walk to their babysitter's house down our street. Daphne says it's already busy sometimes, and I have to hold Clark's hand really tight. And Clark added, "Yeah, I don't want to be, I don't want more big cars driving by when we're walking." Mr. Mayor, is this the legacy you want to leave? Making even a simple walk to daycare feel dangerous for little kids? Even my brothers Evan and Jaden are worried. They play soccer at the side of our house, and sometimes the ball rolls into the street. Evan said, "We usually, we can usually just run and grab it." But Jaden added, "Yeah, but with five hundred parking spots, there could be cars everywhere. We might not even be able to play soccer safely anymore." Mr. McCarthy, is this how we support kids staying active and healthy by taking away their safe places to play? I love riding my bike up and down our street, but with so many cars, it just won't be the same safe and fun place to ride anymore. Town council, I ask again, will nineteen new apartments really bring more value to Normal than the peace of mind knowing kids can play safely? Our street is our playground. It's where we learn new things and make awesome memories. All those extra cars from nineteen apartment buildings will make it noisy and dangerous. We want to find a way for our town to grow without making it scary for us to play outside. Thank you for listening to what we kids have to say.
Our next speaker is Tom Hanson.
Thank you. My name is Tom Hanson, like you said. Several concerns I wanted to express were other developments already either planned or going on in the area. Young America is apparently managing the former Illinois State Married Housing Development, which they indicate is going to be a hundred units. They're playing their traffic analysis report even, and mentioned another development west of Shellborne, just across the street. And then there's apparently the street's named Liam Street. And there's no indication of how big that development's going to be or what it's going to consist of. And here's the real kicker. If these traffic estimates are wrong, you can't fix it. There's nowhere to add traffic lanes. So the people that, I've been there thirty years, and the people that live there are going to have to live with that if this is a mistake. Secondly, the proposed development is huge. Two hundred and twenty-eight apartments, I believe I'm accurate, four hundred and fifty parking spaces. That is just humongous. They were asked at the planning meeting if they would consider two-story buildings, and the developer said no. But that would still be a hundred and twenty-eight apartments and two hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces. I submit to you that that's quite large. And this is in line with the other apartment buildings in the area. If you go west on Shellborne to Constitution Trail and go over Constitution Trail, there are four, I counted them, not accurate because I was driving, but forty to fifty two-story individual apartment buildings, probably in a half-mile or, you know, area around there. So that is more in line with the community that they're wanting to come into. And then the other thing that I will say is the retention pond. They don't have the map up here. The retention pond is right at the intersection of Beach and Shellborne. Now, who loves retention ponds? Canadian geese. That's who loves retention ponds. And to put that retention pond at the intersection is ludicrous. It needs to be, if they're going to go forward with this and get it approved, there need to be two-story buildings, the hundred and twenty-eight and two, hundred and twenty-eight and two hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces. The retention pond needs to be put in the middle of that development, not on the edge there. And so that's all I have to say. Oops, and I ran out of time. Guys, thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Capron.
Hi, good evening. As you said, my name is Lauren Capron. I reside in the Carriage Hills subdivision of Normal, which is going to be right behind the proposed project for the Essex Apartments. I speak tonight to strongly oppose the rezoning proposal for the Colley Ridge subdivision development. The issue is deeply personal to me and my neighbors. It's about our neighborhood's safety, character, and promises made to our community. Last week on May eighth, the Normal Planning Commission recommended the rezoning nearly twenty acres at Beach Street and Shellborne Drive to allow over two hundred and fifty apartments and town home units. They did so despite roughly two hours of public testimony overwhelmingly against the project. Dozens of concerned residents spent their evening voicing objections. Only one person spoke in favor. Yet, the commission voted unanimously to push the development forward. This outcome has left us, your constituents, feeling unheard and betrayed. We are now looking to you, our elected town council, to listen to your constituents and vote against this proposal. The streets and areas are not equipped to handle the increased traffic that this development would cause. The proposal calls for two hundred and twenty-eight apartments and twenty-four town homes with five hundred and four parking spaces, which is only two per unit. That's over five hundred additional cars potentially pouring into Shellborne Drive and Beach Street every day. These roads already handle significant traffic, adding hundreds of more daily trips to choke our intersections and congest our quiet streets. The developer's own traffic study concluded that no significant infrastructure changes would be necessary, but that study was commissioned and paid for by the developer requesting this rezoning. That's not objective analysis. It's a paid report designed to justify this project. To make matters worse, the study was completed in April of 2024, and it fails to account for at least two other large apartment communities that are being built nearby, one of which is directly across the street, owned by them as well. This means that the traffic projections are based on an incomplete assumptions and do not reflect the true cumulative impact on our local roads. This land was always intended to be developed as a single-family homes, and many of us bought our properties relying on that promise. In fact, the original Colley Ridge subdivision covenants explicitly intended the land for single-family housing. overturning these covenants now would betray the trust of every homeowner who made the life decisions based on the town's word. We are not opposing growth. We're opposing this type of growth in a place where it doesn't belong. These are, they're appropriate locations for high-density housing, but the middle of an established single-family neighborhood is not one of them. Proponents argue this development aligns with Normal's comprehensive 2040 plan, claiming our town has a surplus of single-family homes. That claim is based on stale 2016 data. Reality in 2025 is very different. When I purchased my home two years ago, the market was extremely tight, and it still is today. Normal's vacancy rate for single-family homes is under four percent, which is below the healthy norm of eight to ten percent. We need more single-family housing, not less. This rezoning would take a nineteen-point-five-acre parcel that was supposed to provide new single-family homes and instead pack it with apartments. The residents-
Ms. Capron, I'm going to ask you to-
Oh, yeah, I can do that.
Close it out.
Okay. "We are deeply invested in the company's, in this community's future. We are not anti-development. We are pro-responsible development. This rezoning for Colley Ridge is the wrong project at the wrong place. We implore you to stand by the constituents. Please do not rezone this land. Let it be used as it was intended for single-family homes that fill the genuine need in our community."
Our next speaker is Mike Zim. If I said that right? Close enough.
Hi, how's it going, Mayor? My name is Mike Zigmund. I live at 590 Bass Lloyd, which will be right across from the new development. Right there in the corner is our street, and that street will be very close to the entrance and exit of which this new property will be coming in and out. It's going to be, we are one of the only streets that connect Beach and Linden. So the traffic on our street, which was talked about, is going to increase greatly. One of the things that happens yearly on our street is we have light poles. And every year, somebody hits a light pole. They come down. So that'll be an often occurring occurrence, which is no fun for anyone. I don't know, a lot has been said. I don't get the traffic study. I'm not a traffic expert. I just know that it takes me about four seconds to get through the light, and when more cars are going to go through that intersection, it's going to take way longer than the three seconds they say it's going to take added to the wait time for their study. Three seconds. It takes me longer, it takes me four seconds to get through there. So that's one car. I don't understand that. Like I said, I'm not a traffic expert. I'm just a guy who lives in a community who bought a house seventeen years ago to raise my family. My boys are grown. I'm there with my wife. I just put in a new furnace. I just put in new carpeting. I just put in a new griffon. I'm not going anywhere, but my value's going to go down. Our values are going to go down. The lights are, the traffic's going to go up. It's just not the right fit for our neighborhood. I just looked online. There are seven homes in Normal under $250,000 available. Seven. I know when my wife and I, my wife is pregnant with our first kid, we needed a single-family home. And we looked, and we found one on the suburbs of Chicago. Little, small, nine-hundred-square-foot house. It had two bedrooms, a living room, and a kitchen. And that's all we needed, and luckily it had a little garage for me to do my work in. That's what people need. They need a place where they can call their home to get a start. And if we could build some efficient, single-family homes that we desperately need in that little parcel, I think that would serve our community so much better to give people that start that they need. That just availability, because I know I work at a small business in town, and all I hear from my employees is they can't make ends meet. So putting in luxury apartments that don't have a pool, that don't have a clubhouse, that doesn't even have a place for Amazon to drop out packages, not alone those one-way streets that no one's going to be able to go up and down when there's an Amazon truck sitting in. It's just not, there's a lot of questions. And that's what's concerning me. Why are you going to approve something when there's all these questions? And we just need to get answers before we make decisions. That's all I got. Thanks for listening.
Our next speaker is Tracy Evans.
My name is Tracy Evans, and I live on Faton Place. I recently retired after many years of hard work and diligent saving. To anyone who asked me what my retirement plans were, my response was always to eat breakfast each morning at my backyard table and to garden, which is my passion. If this proposal goes through, the three-story apartment building's balconies will look directly into my backyard and the yards of my neighbors, two of which who just put in swimming pools for themselves and their children. Not only is this nightmare, not only is this a nightmare because the building's proposed our three-story, but also because the building closest to my yard is only thirty-four feet away from my elderly next-door neighbor's property line when code requires it to be forty-five feet at least. I will fight that in any way that I can. My question for Andy Metzer is, for those of us on Faton Place who have- Metzer is, for those of us on Faton Place who have clearly been forgotten, where is our buffer? Where are our two-story townhomes like the ones granted to the people of Collyridge? Where are our single-family homes like the ones granted on Vanderbilt? Why aren't those of us on Faton granted a hundred and thirty-four feet of space like the Olmsted property? What is our buffer? Our buffer is a tree. If I read the plan correctly, one of the large trees being planted right outside my fence is a burro, which reaches the size of seventy to eighty feet tall and wide. This attempt at a buffer within thirty-four feet of space between our yards and the proposed three-story apartment building will throw our yards into complete shade. Our beautiful backyards will be reduced to mud patches where nothing will grow. Also, those of us on Faton Place, every car that drives around Captain's Circle will shine their headlights into our homes. I know this is also a concern for people who live at the ends of Basswood and Beechwood. At the May meeting, Mercy Davison graciously provided us with a definition of light pollution, citing that car lights were not included in the formal definition. Whether or not car headlights are in the definition of light pollution is irrelevant. It's an issue that the forgotten residents of Faton would like to see addressed if this nightmare becomes a reality. And the noise pollution with all the slamming car doors that will be in close proximity to our property lines, as well as the slamming of the lids to the garbage dumpsters, one of which is located right across from my property, will be disturbing to say the least, not to mention human noise, music blaring, et cetera. I'm also not looking forward to the smell and the rodents as a result of the dumpster. In closing, it's an unfortunate reality that we live in a world where money is more important than people. For those benefiting financially from this development, I ask how much is enough. I myself cannot conceive of ever doing anything to another person that would have a negative impact on their way of life. How Andy Metzer and others involved can ruin the lives of an entire subdivisions of human beings is beyond my comprehension. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Brown.
Hello. My name's Mike Brown. I live at nine hundred Vanderbilt. Y'all have seen me up here before. I've come before this council and talked about this exact development. I actually told you this exact thing was going to happen when we received a letter from Young America's attorney, or I'm sorry, not Young America's attorney, Don Frankie's attorney, saying that they wanted to sidestep the covenant that we all bought our homes under the impression that that was legally binding. You know, I'm not going to rehash a lot of things that my neighbors and friends have already said, but I do ask that this council takes a moment just to think, think about this, is that, you know, you're hearing a lot of opposition to this. You're hearing one person who really, really wants this, and it's not for the right reasons. He's not trying to solve the housing crisis. He's trying to make a buck. And I think that's a little bit deplorable. You know, it's, it's not something that can be walked back either. I'm sure he's probably entering in with the best intentions of creating a development that is, you know, aesthetically pleasing to the eye, is going to house some folks that, you know, are in need. But by rezoning this and allowing this, it can't be walked back. He might decide he wants to sell that, and that next, next owner might not have those same intentions. So you need to think about the long-term impact rather than, you know, using a short-term fix to solve a long-term problem. So I think that's really it, but I do appreciate your time, and I just wanted the chance to come up and speak. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Patricia Paulson.
Patricia would like to have me step up in her place. I had reached out to Pamela for speaking rights and having-
That's fine.
I'll go and try to-
Sure.
My name is Kayla DeLong. I live at four four five Basswood Lane. I'm a wife, a mother, soon-to-be foster parent, the secretary of Beechwood Commons, Linden Place HOA, and a realtor. I come before you tonight to respectfully but firmly urge you not to approve the proposed rezoning and Essex complex, uh, de- complex development. I have serious concerns about the negative impacts this project will have on our surrounding neighborhoods, on our safety, infrastructure, home values, and overall quality of life. The developer, Mr. Metzer, claimed he reached out to the neighbors through an informal meeting last year, but in reality, only a small number of residents were even notified. He says he used a list provided by the town. In contrast, I personally reached over a thousand residents in just a few days with limited resources. If, if the developer couldn't make a serious effort to communicate during the planning phase, how can we trust them to prioritize our neighborhoods after construction begins? This lack of effort speaks volumes. It shows a disregard for the community that surrounds this development. This property is surrounded by four well-established neighborhoods, all zoned R1B or R2B. The only exceptions, one Normal Plaza, redeveloped into low-impact office spaces, and the former ISU married housing acquired for luxury rentals, but still less than half occupied by Mr. Metzer's own admissions. If rental demand is really that high, why aren't those units already full? There are currently a hundred and twenty available rentals in Normal right now, and another five hundred are coming soon to Towanda and Beach. Meanwhile, land that's already zoned for multifamily houses sits undeveloped. So I ask you, why rezone land that was never meant for apartments? Ironwood Gardens has been cited as a similar development, but let's be clear, it was built before surrounding homes. It accesses, it accesses Linden Street, not a quiet residential road. It buffer, it's buffered by a park, a golf course, and a mobile home park. None of those buffers exist here. This is not a fair or accurate comparison. Normal has a well, well-documented shortage of single-family homes. R1B and R2B zoning supports what we really, what we actually need: detached homes, duplexes, and zero-lot housing. Right now, there are thirty-six homes for sale in Normal, and only twenty-one under four hundred thousand. Subdivisions near us, like Pheasant Ridge, Kelly Glen, Weldon Reserve, and Greystone Fields are thriving. Homes are selling fast. This land hasn't remained undeveloped because of a lack of demand, but because of owner's choice. Mr. Frankie has built thirteen homes in Normal this year. Six are available right now, but not here. He currently has not built on this land. Why not? Because selling to a developer is more profitable, but that profit comes at the expense of his original promise to homeowners who trusted his vision. This project threatens our home values, safety, and quality of life. We bought in these neighborhoods expecting low-density, single-family zoning. A two hundred and fifty-three-unit complex with five hundred parking spots would radically change that. Increase cha- increase traffic and congestion, more noise and light pollution, loss of peace, privacy, and the reason many of us choose to live here in Normal. Would you want to buy a house that backs up to a ma- a massive apartment complex? Would you want your backyard filled with headlights and noise every night? Hundreds of cars equals more air and noise pollution, light pollution with dozens of parking lot lights and streetlights, five hundred parking spots equals major sto- uh, major stormwater runoff and heat, high-density buildings equals greater fire risk. I live on one of the few throughways that you've already heard-
Just to summarize, I'd like you to, to sum it up.
The land was already intended for single-family housing. That's what buyers were told. That's what zoning supports. That's why we moved here. Please do not change the rules mid-game. Uphold the zoning. Deny the rezoning request. Encourage developers to build apartments on land that already is zoned for them. Let's grow Normal the right way with balance, care, and integrity. Thank you for your time and your continued service to this community.
That concludes our public comment tonight. Before we move on, I'm going to ask Jason to give me an opinion on the error I made previously on our public hearing.
No, you didn't make an error. It's only when we vote on the item.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
Never mind. Uh, we moved to the omnibus agenda. Item's considered routine and will be taken with a single vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Ms. Smith.
Item F, as in Frank?
Thank you. Any other? Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Items considered under omnibus are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of May fifth, twenty twenty-five, a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment is of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, a motion to approve recommended harm and arts grants award, a resolution to award the bid for the Hovey Avenue Water Service Re- uh, relocation project to George Gildner Incorporated at a total cost of one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to Denler Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five crack and joint filling project in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents, a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to Stark Excavating Incorporated for the Chippewa Streets Improvement Project in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, a resolution authorizing a contract with Balcony's Midwest LLC doing business as Midwest Fiber Recycling, and that is for the processing of recycled materials, a resolution authorizing a joint agreement with the City of Bloomington and the Ecology Action Center for an energy efficiency program, and a resolution authorizing a petition to annex town-owned properties in Bloomington-Normal Water Reclamation District. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item F is a resolution waiving the formal bid process and authorizing a contract with Donaldson Construction Company for a pilot project application of pressure pave, pavement preservation in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Ms. Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Uh, yes. I had corresponded with our city manager for some clarification on this, and because we do use a Pacer pavement rating system, and I was curious about the rating that existed for this segment of streets. And I, I did drive out on them Sunday and noticed that they are in pretty good shape, and I was just wondering if you could go into a little detail, as you provided me in your response, about the process and which streets are chosen, and then the potential savings available.
Sure. I will, I'll do my best. In terms of the process, this per- this is the third year of a three-year pilot program that we are trying for pavement preservation. We're using this as a strategy to help extend the life of the pavement. I believe the streets that are on the list to be under, using this pressure pave system this year, were last resurfaced in two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen or so. We did use the Pacer study and to help select the streets to use, and we're going to be focusing on the streets in, I believe, an Ironwood neighborhood. So, yeah, Ironwood subdivision, they had the ratings in the eight to nine range out of a ten-point scale, which means, you know, we're, what we're doing is short of resurfacing. It's again to, to extend the life of the pavement.
I, I think the Ironwood was one of the earlier ones, but this year, these streets are over in the development near Parkside.
Right, right. Sorry. And last year, we did Northridge, Heather Ridge, Northfields, and Ironwood area. This particular contract, if council approves it, it will, will be applied to about two point six miles of lanes.
And you also indicated in the response that it can extend the life of the road by eight to ten years over our typical wear and tear, and this two hundred and twenty-two thousand for that many lane miles is substantially less than fully repaving a road. So I'm, I'm hoping the reports are positive as a result of this pilot project.
That's correct. As I said, this is the third year of the pilot program, so we'll see how, how the roads do over time, and if this, if we believe they're successful and effective, then we will continue this process.
That's all I had.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Uh, we move to general orders. We've got six items on general orders that have to do with two different properties. Uh, the first item is a resolution approving an amendment two to annexation agreement regarding the thirty-six of plus-or-minus acre property at the northwest corner of Towanda Avenue and Beach Street, referred to as the Carden Springs. Move approval.
Second.
Uh, Mayor, this is the item that, since it is an amendment to an annexation agreement, just for council's awareness, it does require a supermajority, so we would need five yeses to approve this amended annexation agreement.
Discussion or questions on this issue? Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item eight is a resolution conditionally approving a final development plan for the Carden Springs PUD. Move approval.
Second.
Is there discussion on this item or questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item nine is a resolution conditionally approving a final plat for the Carden Springs Planned Unit Development subdivision. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Item ten is an ordinance rezoning property in the town of Normal at the northeast corner of Beach and Shellborne Drive. Move approval. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The next three items are all related. They pertain to the issues that most of our public commenters addressed this evening. So the next three items, rezoning, the amended preliminary subdivision plan, and then the Essex PUD preliminary plan, are all connected, and I thought it might be wise to ask Town Planner Mercy Davison, or Planning Director, I don't see her in the audience, oh, there she is, to come forward, explain what the three action items are, if, if it's all right with council, to talk about all three at once prior to council discussion. And then I believe the developer has asked for an opportunity to speak as well. So Ms. Davison, if you could, and, and along with Ms. Davison, we've got Mr. Otto, Director of Public Works and Engineering, so I'll ask these two to kind of inform council on what these three agenda items are, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. Um, so I'm just going to run through what's going on this evening with these three items. Um, as you know, there are three voting items on the agenda that all pertain to the Collyridge subdivision. This is the area photograph of the remaining nineteen and a half acres of this subdivision. Um, as you would have read in the reports, Collyridge was approved in two thousand as a single-family subdivision with a hundred and fifty-seven lots. Uh, as of today, eighty-three lots have been platted and built. Um, most of them were built before twenty-ten. Um, in twenty-fourteen, that was when the property owner came through and asked to convert the remaining nineteen and a half acres from seventy-four lots to eighty lots as part of the preliminary plan of that time, and then nothing happened with that. So nothing was platted, and certainly nothing was built. So that brings us to twenty-twenty-three, when a proposed purchaser came with a concept to convert this remaining land into a combination of R2 for some attached housing, and then a, a larger portion, seventeen acres, for R3 multifamily development. Um, at, in twenty-twenty-three, that proposal was pulled from the public hearing process because of a private covenant issue. But what you see before you today is very similar to that proposal in twenty-twenty-three with a couple of significant differences that I'll just point out. Um, so we can just run through, here's the rezoning proposal. You can just see the smaller tract in the upper right. Tract one is R2, that's two and a half acres, and the larger tract two is seventeen acres. That would be R3. This is the proposed new preliminary subdivision plan, which shows the proposal to extend Vanderbilt Drive, which currently has, has been a dead end for many, many years. Um, the proposal would be to extend it as a public street and terminate it in a cul-de-sac that meets code for truck turnaround and- that meets code for truck turnaround and that sort of thing. In that area, there would be two single-family homes detached, single-family homes on the east end, and then the remaining sixteen lots would be zero lot line duplexes. So, that would be what happens in the R-two area. In the remaining area would be a one-lot planned unit development, which is the third item on your agenda. And in that area, as was discussed, it would be a total of two hundred and fifty-two units, residential units. The ones along the bottom of the image, the image is sideways, so north is to the right, but along the east edge, there would be townhomes, and then the remaining structures would be multifamily, again totaling two hundred and fifty-two residences. There'd be three access points that you can see, two on Beach, one on Shelbourne, two detention areas, which are different from the original Collie Ridge proposal, which had no stormwater detention at all. And within this PUD would be significantly more green space, open space, landscaping, et cetera, than code requires. The total density would be just under fifteen units per acre, which is significantly lower than what code would permit. The major changes between this and two thousand and twenty-three is that the Vanderbilt Road would not connect into the PUD. That was part of the original proposal. It would have been a private drive connecting over into the PUD. That's been eliminated, and they also took out two of the residential lots off of Vanderbilt to allow for two detached single-family homes. So, those are the two big differences. Staff found this proposal to meet the provisions of both the zoning code and the goals of our comprehensive plan, along with goals of other plans that are important to the town. I don't have to go through an exhaustive list, it is in the report, but I'll say that this is the sort of infill development that the comprehensive plan prioritizes quite highly. It is adjacent to existing services that are adequate. It's adjacent to a transportation system that an outside engineer found to be adequate for this development. We already provide emergency services to this area. It's near many amenities, including the Constitution Trail and Connect Transit Service, and near many parks. In order, though, to make the sort of new development compatible with existing development, we look for things like dense landscape screening, sensitive lighting design, adequate green spaces inside the development to provide extra amenities in a slightly denser part of the community. This plan provides those things as called for by code and, again, by the comprehensive plan. So, staff sent a positive recommendation, and we're certainly happy to talk about it. I guess the one item that came up as a specific design feature that was questioned by the neighbors was the height of the apartments, and that they, currently, they're all shown as being three stories. At the planning commission meeting, there was quite a bit of talk about that, and the planning commission ended up recommending in favor of the buildings on the north end being two stories instead of three. I'll say that staff continues to stand by our recommendation in favor of the proposal as it is, as there are many, many examples in the community of R-three-A directly adjacent to R-one, and in several cases, the structures on those properties being two and a half stories, three stories, and sometimes even four stories, directly next to single-family homes. It can be done well, and we think this proposal is an example of that. So, we are happy to support this proposal for the many ways in which it meets code and the comprehensive plan.
Questions for Ms. Davison. Ms. Smith?
Does anyone from the town have any insights as to why the owner of the property previously had not expanded and continued to build, just by way of reference? What are the responsibilities of a builder who intends to sell individual lots? Do they have to put in street paving, sidewalks, utility connections? What are their costs?
Ms. Smith, I don't know that we can respond to what a developer's cost would be specifically.
No, not specifically, but the responsibility.
In terms of their obligations, yes, we can talk about that generally, and Mr. Otto can address that.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. The developers in the town, the process generally starts with a preliminary plan, which lays out the utilities, the infrastructure, the roads that service a facility. Those preliminary plans expire after three years if no development occurs, if a final plat is not filed. After that, the developer has to come back through the process. So, that could be an opportunity to look at the market, change their mind, in general, do something different with the property.
But before they can sell lots, do they have to have a street and utility connections in place in order to market a lot or have something built on it?
In order to have something built on it, yes. There are instances where larger tracts of undeveloped land change hands without the process going through, but those are generally large undeveloped tracts that would still have to go through the public process.
But it would require pavement, sidewalks, storm, sanitary sewer, water extension, all the utility services, in addition to detention basins and stormwater management.
Speaking of detention basins, there wasn't one in the original Collie Ridge subdivision, but I recall that in a number of the projects that come before us, it's standard practice to have a detention basis. What purpose does a detention basis serve?
A detention basin controls stormwater runoff. So, when a development occurs, additional impervious areas constructed, new pavements, new roofs, that typically includes added runoff, so increased volumes and rates. So, detention basin is designed to store that water and prevent damage to downstream properties.
And reading over the materials, it talked about a dry detention space as well as the wet detention basin. So, in the dry detention space, will it be plantings that can tolerate water when it comes in, but for the most part, will it be dry?
It will be designed to be dry most of the time, yes. The bottom could be planted with typical turf grass. The dry bottom detention basins are typically not wet for more than twenty-four to forty-eight hours, depending on the volume of the storm, the amount of rain, and a certain amount of time. Or it could be other types of lower-maintenance-type turf, but generally, yes, it's designed to function for short periods underwater, but most of the time to be dry.
And this is a relatively flat area, since it has been farmed for so long, so with the addition of more buildings, it would increase the possibility for runoff without these detention basins in place?
That's correct. The basins are designed to protect the downstream properties.
Now, what are the responsibilities of someone who comes before the council with a planned urban development, the PUDs? What do they have to take on and make sure it's part of their development? And then, go ahead, answer that question.
Well, there are many aspects of the code that are very specific, like how much common recreational space do they have to provide, how much parking, you know, just all the quality of the building design. But most of the time, in this kind of arrangement, the internal, like, roadways will be private. So, if that's kind of what you're getting at, there are aspects of this that are privately owned and maintained, rather than in a typical subdivision where it might be a public street. So, some of these amenities are privately owned and maintained.
So, the town of Normal won't have responsibility for snow removal?
That's correct, on the interior portions of the PUD. For Vanderbilt Drive, the short cul-de-sac extension, that will become a public street that would be under town maintenance and would receive snow plowing, garbage, and recycle, public services.
And as a PUD, garbage removal will be the responsibility of the developer and that PUD, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there was a question about the setback from residences. What is the requirement for setbacks across all the borders of this planned development?
So, in a planned unit development, actually, all of the bulk requirements, heights, setbacks, et cetera, technically are not fixed like they are elsewhere. We note them in the report, like, we'll say, hey, if this weren't a PUD, this would be a setback, or this would be a height restriction. It's been practiced for decades to just point that out. So, whether or not it's a variance or not, you could quibble over that. But if this were not a PUD, the backyard setback to the adjacent properties would need an additional fifteen feet, so they would need to be forty-five feet from the property line. One of these buildings does not meet that. It's at thirty-four feet instead of forty-five.
Only one building?
Just the one.
And looking at the streets, are they the typicals lane width for public streets?
The streets interior to the PUD are private, so they're not constructed to our standard thirty-feet-wide city-town standard. If you look at Saltbox Boulevard, for instance, it has diagonal parking, so it's designed in a more slow-speed parking lot access to the buildings. It's not designed to town-street standards.
But there is no access into or out of the PUD that takes residents of the PUD into Collie Ridge? It's completely isolated from accessing that through streets, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And the access points on here, it looks like you've got one access point on Shelbourne and one access point on Beach Street. Is that correct?
There are one on Shelbourne and two on Beach, one at the northernmost property line.
I see, I see the second one. Okay. And does the one on Beach intersect with Bass across the road?
It does not. It is roughly a hundred feet north of that connection.
Okay. That's all I had.
Mr. Byers?
Thanks, Mayor. Just, I think, a brief question for staff on procedure. I think, I appreciate Ms. Davison noting how Planning Commission had made a recommendation with maybe a slight change from the original proposal, just for clarity, so my colleagues and I understand what we're voting on tonight. Are we voting on the proposal as originally submitted? Are we voting on the proposal as amended or suggested to amend by Planning Commission? What would kind of be the generic action be that we're taking?
This council report is recommending council approval on what was submitted by the developer. Staff's recommendation is to move forward with the actual application as submitted, does not reflect the planning commission's suggested modification.
Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks. A few questions for staff on this before sharing some thoughts on it later. So, picking up where Mr. Byers just left off, for clarity, then, the Planning Commission, when they discussed the limitation from the three stories down to two, my understanding in reading the minutes, though I was not at that meeting in person, was that that was for any of the buildings that back up to or that border R-one zoning? And I may have that wrong, but just for simplicity, since the map is up, tell me what all the Planning Commission recommended, the three down to two, what all buildings are we talking about that they made that recommendation for?
Sure. The four structures around Captain Circle, so the ones that are kind of parallel to Beach and the one backing up to Vanderbilt, and then the two on the south.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Unrelated question, we heard a number of public commenters talk about the parking study and the impacts on parking, and the date with which the parking study was completed. Can we dive into that a little more? And I know there was some comparison on parking, but being that a lot of it was based off two thousand and fifteen numbers, can you kind of give us more detail as to the validity of that, how things have, you know, evolved likely over time, and, you know, kind of address that issue, if you would?
Sure. Yep, be happy to.
The traffic study?
Yeah, so, in two thousand and twenty, counts were done by IDOT. Those counts, we know, are not accurate. Most folks were working from home or not traveling as much as they would normally. So, the most recent townwide counts that we consider to be normalized would be two thousand and fifteen. These numbers were used for the study. We don't believe that traffic had increased appreciably between then and now. In some cases, after COVID, we've not seen a complete recovery of traffic volumes, so we feel the two thousand and fifteen numbers represent a general indication of what's out there today.
Okay. And how far out geographically does a traffic study look? One of the public commenters tonight referenced impacts, not just on the immediate surrounding intersection of Beach and Shelbourne, but down Shelbourne and Towanda, let's say, or I think even referenced even Shelbourne or Towanda and Fort Jesse, a lot of traffic going to and from veterans, which anybody who lives on anywhere north of that area knows that that gets backed up at certain times of day, as is.
Traffic studies vary. Typically, we start close to a development to look at the intersections that are immediately adjacent, look at the impacts to that. In this case, Farnsworth analyzed the intersection of Shelbourne and Beach using peak hour count data that's recent, as of thirty to forty-five days ago. The finding was that there was no appreciable increase in delay. I think the longest delay increase in movement was four seconds per car, so it's pretty minor in terms of the overall volume. And with that, as you move further away, the trips tend to disperse, and so the further away from the development you get, the less impact it has to a particular intersection.
And was any, within any of the confines of the traffic study, was consideration given to the additional traffic counts that will come from a completed Carden Springs, which we discussed in earlier item tonight, seeing as, you know, there will be some going in the same general direction, since you're not that far off?
The Carden Springs development would have been considered what we call background traffic, given its location north at Towanda and Beach. So, when we look at traffic, we look at a twenty-year timeframe, and background traffic can increase between one to one and a half percent per year, and that's the way it would have been considered in the study.
Okay. I think that's all I have on traffic. One final question, that I'm not sure exactly who to direct it to on staff, but is discussion of the covenants? Can we please get a little, just for the refresher on, I know those are neighborhood covenants, covenants not town covenants, but how does, is that issue resolved to the satisfaction of the town as it relates to our action here tonight?
Sure. So, the covenants generally, private covenants throughout the town, do not control the town's actions when it comes to rezoning or consideration of plans like this. When this item first came or was slated to go before the Planning Commission, we were made aware at that time of a covenant issue that we were unaware of prior to that, and as a result of that, the applicant voluntarily withdrew the application. Since then, they have provided some documentation that seems to show that the covenant issue has been resolved. Again, that would not dictate your decision tonight one way or the other, but it does appear that it's been resolved.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, we have the experts in front of us. Thanks, Mayor. Although I assume I know the answer, we're talking about entry points. I think one of my colleagues confirmed that we don't have an entry point from the proposed Essex into Collie Ridge. Can you talk to us about Approach Street? Nobody's talked about that, or I didn't see anything about that in the packet for us. I assume we're just going to stay as it is today, and there'll be screening across that street as well. There's no planned connection?
There is no planned connection, so Approach is the road that's parallel to Shelbourne on the south end of the development, and it would remain as it is today. It's been, it's a very short dead end, unlike Vanderbilt's a pretty long, just dead end right now, so we were, I believe, I speak for Ryan, but we were okay with that.
It's a very short segment, so we were comfortable leaving it without a typical cul-de-sac bulb, given the shortness of it and the number of homes that are accessed from it. We felt like it wasn't necessary to build more pavement to own and maintain for the long term.
So, there's not going to be any construction right next to the existing homes or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Further questions for staff? There probably is going to be more, and so we'd ask you to keep yourselves available. At this point, I think Mr. Nessar and his attorney, I think, is going to make their statement.
I'm Andy Nessar. I'm here in a couple capacities tonight. One is as a member of the Purchasing LLC, Worthington LLC, and another, professionally, I'm the president and owner of Young America Realty. We are a third-party property manager in the town of Normal. We are in our fifty-first year of operation. It was founded in nineteen seventy-four by my father-in-law, Ralph Endress. We're locally owned and operated. All of our apartments today are in the Bloomington Normal community. I live here myself, the founder of Young America lives here himself. And Young America is a management company, manages about three thousand total units. About half of those are focused- About half of those are focused, purpose-built student housing right around ISU's campus, and about half, we call them our residential market, but it's conventional multifamily that's not specifically targeting students. The overwhelming majority of the properties that you see with our sign on them are third-party owned, meaning that I don't have ownership in them, nobody in the founding family of Young America has ownership in them. We truly are a management services provider to them. For those properties, you know, we are tasked to operate the property according to a budget that's approved by the owner. And if you contrast that with this project, it would be a property that we do have ownership, interest, and control in, we actually have influence over the budget, and that gives us more control in how we operate the property and maintain it long-term. Our track record is that we are just not a build-to-sell developer. We hold on, we have a track record of long-term hold. We believe that curb appeal matters, and I think you'll see that in developments that we have completed over the last 25 years, including Kensington Suites and Rutherford Suites, the Willow Trails development, both phases of the Lodge on Willow, and the Gables on Broadway, to name a few. And introducing this specific project, we put a lot of emphasis on the design aesthetics of it, and it's important to us for properties that we intend to hold long-term. We worked with an architect who has, we've worked with previously involved in the Summit and in the Lodge on Willow. He's a high-end architect of multimillion-dollar homes, and he lends his, you know, design capacity into helping us get the design correct and the proportions correct. And, you know, we tell him we'd like these billings to be timeless and something we still want to have in our portfolio for the long-term. We'd be cladding them, not with vinyl siding, but with engineered wood siding. It would have a kind of high-end northeast coastal feel to it. It'd be heavily landscaped, and you can see the examples of heavily landscaped buildings by seeing some of those others that we've done, including the Gables on Broadway. It'll have a park feature at both the north and the south, and is focused on some pedestrian walkability. That Central Boulevard is just a common gathering space to the community that connects both the north and the south park. It is mostly apartments. As Mercy said, it does have townhomes and duplexes and a couple single-family lots. But notably, and as she noted as well, it is much less dense than the R3 zoning we're seeking allows. Specifically, you know, we're proposing 15 units per acre, where R3 zoning allows up to 23 units per acre. R3 zoning says we need to have a minimum of 12% common recreation space, and we're showing 41. We did have a meeting with neighbors to this parcel previously. We came back with two significant changes to our proposal, which eliminated the motor vehicle access to Vanderbilt cul-de-sac. And we plotted a single-family home immediately adjacent to the final existing home on Vanderbilt as well. And I suppose in summary, for 25 years, this property has been in stalemate, and it could continue indefinitely as farmland, but I don't think that that's ideal for Normal, and that is not what the comprehensive plan calls for. The plan we're proposing meets the code for the proposed zoning, with the exception of the connection to Vanderbilt, with, I think everybody in the room supports that waiver. So we're requesting that the town approve our development as proposed.
Mr. Mayor? My name is Pat Fitzgerald. I'm an attorney on behalf of Worthington LLC, the developer of the proposed planned unit development. I'm with the Meyer Cable Firm. We have an office here in Bloomington, Illinois. You have three items before you this evening on the agenda concerning the Essex. Two of the items are relatively straightforward. The rezoning and the approval of the amended preliminary subdivision plan, both your town's staff supports approval, and the Plan Commission unanimously supported approval of those items. The third item, the conditional approval of the Essex preliminary development plan is slightly more nuanced. And by that, what I mean is your town's staff supports it as proposed. I believe Ms. Davidson's comments indicate as much. The Plan Commission ultimately unanimously also supported it, but the Plan Commission on its own motion recommended that four of the apartment buildings be reduced from three stories to two stories due to their proximity to single-family residential. In my opinion, the Plan Commission motion to reduce the building height is not appropriate for two reasons. First of all, it's not consistent with prior development precedent in Normal. As has been cited, the Ironwood subdivision sits directly adjacent to the Ironwood Gardens planned unit development, and that's an example of three-story multifamily being directly adjacent to single-family residential. But secondly, and arguably more importantly, the Plan Commission motion is not consistent with the provisions of your 2017 comprehensive plan. I believe four of you, Ms. Lorenz is not here, but three of you, the mayor, Mr. Preston, and Mr. McCarthy, were on the council in 2017 that adopted the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan has numerous references in it to encouraging more infill development with more density and more housing type diversity. It's interesting, the comprehensive plan expressly calls out the Collie Ridge subdivision in it. It denotes it as a new suburban future neighborhood. And I turn to page F 4.2 of your comprehensive plan, where it states in reference to these new suburban future neighborhood developments, and I quote, "Many of them are still unfinished with a great deal of vacant land that holds potential to avoid, or at least mitigate, some of the mistakes in these areas. For those areas that are still a blank canvas, the town should encourage a diverse mix of residential types and densities." Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, I would submit to you that the Essex plan development is exactly the type of development that you anticipated back in 2017 when you included those words in your comprehensive plan. I encourage you to support the plan and the conditional approval of it. Thank you.
Questions? Ms. Smith?
Just a point for how we're going to proceed. If we have questions or comments about the, all of the agenda items, are we going to limit it to, at this time, and then vote in sequence, or?
I would prefer that we get our questions now, but if something does pop up, sure, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions.
Okay.
But since one starts the process to the other two, one way or the other, I think it's more appropriate to, as much as possible, to ask those questions now.
If it's appropriate, I'm prepared to make some comments.
Sure.
When questions have been answered. So we had Patrick Hoban from the Economic Development Council mention the housing studies that have been done that indicate we are short 4,000 housing units here in Normal. And taking a report that was delivered to the council in the fall of last year, it isolates construction building permits. And over the 10-year period from 2014 to 2023, the number of houses, housing permits that were issued ranged from a low of 21 to a high of 80 in those years, with the only anomaly, 104 housing permits for residential housing issued in 2021. That rate of housing development for single-family homes would not come near to putting a dent into a 4,000-unit shortfall. Another thing that he alluded to was an economic study that looked at the number of people who are employed in Bloomington but live elsewhere. And that report, which was delivered to interested community members earlier this spring, indicated that there are 31,897 workers commuting into the town of Normal and then going back to their home communities. As they, as they forecast, when those people leave, they're taking their paychecks with them, and they're paying the property taxes on their homes and into another community. But more importantly, they're spending their money in their home communities, most likely. And that sales tax revenue that those workers generate is not being captured by the town of Normal, and sales tax is our largest source of revenue in the general fund. The other thing that he didn't point out was that when they're trying to attract employers to our area, they're interested in knowing what our housing situation is because they want to be sure that there are workers here to fill the jobs they want to bring to our community. And if we don't have the houses for them, that's not going to allow it to happen. As one speaker pointed out, high-density infill housing has the advantage of taking advantage of existing roads, existing sewers, existing water lines, existing utilities. And there's no cost to the town of Normal for extending those out to sprawl development. And as such, we have the potential to enjoy lower property taxes because we're not incurring that burden. In the Financial Trends Report that was presented to us last November, it was, there was a comparison was made about the property tax rate that Normal pays compared to Bloomington, Springfield, Champaign, Peoria, Urbana, Galesburg, and Decatur. Normal has the lowest property tax rate per 100 in assessed value at .8543 compared to Bloomington at .9929, with Decatur as the highest at 2.342. So there is some economic benefit to infill housing, and given that the PUD owner is taking responsibility for maintaining the streets and providing some essential services to them, that's an added cost-saving to us as a community. I mentioned and highlighted that a builder has many more responsibilities, but can only recover a single home sale at a time should they make that investment. It is a larger investment for an apartment to be built, and we have no control over requiring development of properties. And I think from what I shared about the building permits for single-family homes, it's just not happening. And so for all the reasons that have been discussed tonight and the differences that are shown here, I want to indicate that I do feel that this is an appropriate development for this area. And the questions about Young America's reputation in managing property, it is an unfair comparison to look to them about their management of the former ISU married housing. They don't, they don't control the budget there. They're reliant on who they contract with to give them the funds to keep that up in the standards that they will take. And in terms of screening the individuals coming into their community, those, they require a 650 credit score for people that want to rent from them. And they also, prospective tenants must also demonstrate that they have an income sufficient where housing is no more than 30% of their income. It's for a number of these reasons that I think it is smarter for us to approve this because if we do not, if we arbitrarily say no to this, after they've checked all the boxes, after they've done everything that was asked of them under our code, are consistent with our long-term plans, we'd be moving the goalpost if we said, sorry, you did all that, but it doesn't matter. So I will be voting yes.
Mr. Byers?
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank staff and the applicant for answering our questions. I want to thank all the members of the public that are here tonight for engaging in this process. I've received many emails and have tried to respond to a lot of those. I know I haven't responded to everybody yet, but I certainly intend to. Kind of in the backdrop of tonight's meeting, I kind of see that we've had five to 10-plus years of some pretty significant economic growth in our community. With that economic growth comes new industry, new people, and new projects. And also with that growth, I believe, comes a responsibility to try to sustain it. I've had the pleasure of traveling all over our country in my professional life. I'm a road warrior, I travel a lot. I've been to a lot of small and medium-sized communities across the Midwest, across the West, South, and East. I've traveled a lot, seen a lot of places, and I've traveled to communities that are growing. I've traveled to communities that are stagnant, and I've traveled to communities that are shrinking economically. And many of the concerns I've heard tonight, I also have regarding crime in our, crime in our community, poorly maintained properties, public safety. But I don't find those generally in my travels in the communities that are growing and whose economies are growing. I find those in the communities that are shrinking and are not supporting projects like this that are going to sustain the economy in the long run. And in those shrinking communities, you see a loss of industry, a loss of people, and a loss of projects. And I don't want our community to become a shrinking community. I want us to continue to grow, and I think that supporting projects like is being proposed tonight will allow us to sustain our local economic growth and continue to pave a brighter future for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Robers?
Yes. So as you're probably aware, pretty new to the town council, but my, one of my concerns I have with the growth we're having in our population, and particularly our working-class population, is that the housing that we are bringing to this community remains affordable to the people who live in the community. Keep in mind, this is working-class people, not people making six-figure incomes typically. So I want, want to understand from you that these developments we're making, are these going to be accessible to people in that working class who are working potentially at Rivian or coming in to work at State Farm?
Sure. We envision these being high-end apartments, and we envision them being toward the very top of the cost of apartment housing in Bloomington-Normal. And I think, perhaps to answer your question, I think they will create more affordable housing for people in that kind of, is it attainable for somebody in the middle of the workforce? The way to make more housing attainable for them is to make more housing. And if we increase the supply, that will ease the pressure burden off of all of the housing market. But I wouldn't sit here and tell you the average Rivian worker is our target market.
I'll jump in here with some comments in that. It's kind of interesting what we're seeing. I remember when I first became a Normal Town Council member and mayor, we were in a community that had a lot of, a lot of growth happening. There was a lot of building being done, and there was projects that put multifamily housing next to single-family housing. And there was new single-family housing being put next to older single-family housing. And many of the comments I heard tonight were echoed in those developments. People were afraid, afraid of what they considered the unknown. And that's valid. I understand that, and that's why it's critical that our town staff holds, any developer that comes to us with a project to the standards to ensure that that doesn't happen. And I could list some single, or some multifamily projects that are very similar to what Young America is trying to do tonight, where we had an exact duplicate of what happened here tonight in terms of the issues of parking, the issues of traffic, the issues of crime, issues of lighting. And those projects flourished, and we've never had complaints on those projects because they were done properly and adequately. And that is what our job is, to hold the developer to those standards, to make sure we get the right mix and the right project. I believe this is the right project. One of the other things, too, that... One of the other things, too, that's kind of interesting is, one of the mantras of this community is, where are our young people? Where can they live? Where can they afford to live? They leave. And we want them, either they go away to school, we want them to come back. But we don't have housing for them. And that's, to me, a significant issue because there are people that do want to come back. And it's interesting that Mr. Netzer made the comment that he did about more housing. I was in a U.S. Conference of Mayors seminar in January, and there was a case study in Minneapolis that said exactly what he just said, that if you want to increase affordable housing in your market, you have to increase housing for everybody. You get a stair-step effect. It's people who want better housing and it's not there move up, the next trench below moves up. And in a proven test case, that did work. So I think that's the other thing that I find compelling in this whole issue. Thirdly, before I came here tonight, I talked to a single-family housing developer on a separate issue. And he has told me it is almost impossible to build what most people today would think of, of single-family affordable housing. You know, and we're not talking for low end. We're talking the worker housing that was just brought up. To build that single family is very, very, very difficult for a builder today because of the lack of labor, skilled labor to do the work, the cost of labor, the cost of materials, inflation, borrowing costs. He told me that every time he bids a house, he's usually off $50,000 and on the low side in terms of that. And that's what builders are facing in not just this community, but are facing every community in the United States. It's a national issue. We're aware of it as mayors across the United States. And it's something that's not going to turn on a dime. So if we have an opportunity to build quality housing, and it's our job to ensure that it's quality housing, we have to allow that to happen. We have to be able to let people come into this community. We need to grow the stock of housing so that we're, we're making it more affordable. And that's the way to do it, is to have more housing. And it's been proven. That's why I'm supporting this. And I know you're, you're very concerned about what it's going to do to your quality of life, and it's our job to make sure that that doesn't happen. Mr. Preston?
Thanks. Thanks to the, if my count was correct, 16 of you who spoke publicly this evening. I know there are many more sitting in the council chambers tonight who live in Collie Ridge, live on Phaeton, I believe is the highly-pronounced place just to the north, Basswood, the surrounding area. There's been a lot of engagement from neighbors on this issue, as is evidenced tonight, as is evidenced by the amount of public comment at the Planning Commission meeting a week and a half ago. And clearly, this is something that the neighborhood, one, cares about and has rallied to get involved with because of the impact that it has on your, impact that it has in your neighborhood. So thanks for coming out. Thanks for being involved and for making your voices heard. And so here, here are my thoughts on it because I, I totally get and respect, like, from a neighbor standpoint, you know, you are settled in your home, you've been here, you've helped raise your family here, while you have backed up to Cornfield, you know, likely for the entire time that you've owned your home, you knew there was the possibility of some development there. And so, you know, but you didn't anticipate it being a multifamily development. You know, on the single-family versus multifamily, there has been nothing, you know, from the town or otherwise that has been stopping, single-family development for this tract of land for the last decade plus. There has been a lot of time and a lot of opportunities. Should there be a single-family proposal that came through, we would have gladly given it the consideration, you know, that we would any other project. But it hasn't happened. And what came before us tonight is something that meets a critical need that we see across the community and across the region. And so with that, okay, from a neighbor standpoint, what can we do? How can this proposal and what ultimately ends up happening or not, but what ends up happening, how do we address the neighbor concerns, legitimate concerns, legitimate questions as effectively and like, you know, clearly as possible? One thing that stands out to me in that effort is that Vanderbilt is cul-de-sacced, that there is not traffic access from your neighborhood, for those who live there in Collie Ridge, into the proposed new development. I think that that, you know, kudos to the developer and the neighbors for making that point heard from the original proposal they came with to now. I think that's a big change. And I think that's something that, to, I blanked on the name, I believe it was Kylie, but our youngest public commenter this evening spoke about playing in the yard with all of her friends. I don't know if, you know, her family's on Vanderbilt or elsewhere. But that is a tangible impact on people's lives, you know, in terms of traffic going in front of your house in your residential neighborhood. And so I think that, one, that's a positive, a positive change that I would have a lot of concern about if that wasn't included in the proposal we're looking at tonight. A second, frankly, and it may, you know, may not be what some people wanted to hear even, but was the answer that the developer gave a short while ago about the target market for these units. And while there's no question that the community and the country need more affordable, quote-unquote, equitable housing, accessible housing in general, like, you know, for the people sitting in this room, you'd probably rather have luxury apartments, you know, and townhomes behind you than affordable ones behind your neighborhood. That's my guess. And that is, you know, the target market for these. And so these will be luxury, expensive, nice properties. Like I said, not everybody thinks that that's a win, and we certainly need affordable and equitable housing in general. But for those who live in the neighborhood and would probably prefer that, that's what the plan is, it sounds like, for this development. Another piece in terms of the neighborhood impact that hit me was with the cul-de-sacking of Vanderbilt having the addition of two single-family lots that are the most adjacent to existing homes in your neighborhood is a plus. There will be nobody in the neighborhood who, you know, is currently there in Collie Ridge who will have a next-door neighbor that is anything other than single-family. You know, from there, having nice duplexes to round out the street, I think makes a nice transition point. Then a final point that hits me is, you know, from a neighborhood standpoint, like, it is, I think, understated how much of a benefit it is that the owner, the developer, the manager of this proposal is two or three miles down the street. It's not some national company that plops something down and sells it, you know, seven years later based out of, you know, one, you know, East Coast or West Coast that you never see from, never hear from, can't contact, there's no accountability. That's not the case here. You guys have well-known, well-established, local, not only managers, but also owners. And I think that is a huge plus in the confines of what we're discussing here tonight. So to sum all of this up, I mean, and the neighbors, genuinely, I, I do hear you. And I live in Ironwood on the end that is close to Ironwood Gardens. And while I don't think it has much impact at all on my life, I have little kids, on their lives either, if Ironwood Gardens hypothetically wasn't built yet and the proposal for it came, I'm sure I would be hearing from my neighbors and have myself a lot of the same concerns and questions that many of you expressed here tonight. So I hear you on that. And in the confines of the larger picture of how do we accommodate the legitimate concerns that are being brought up by neighbors with the critical need and the proposal as it relates to what, you know, the developer's trying to accomplish and what the community needs, I think that the proposal we forced this evening does that about as effectively and as reasonably as possible. So I'm in support.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief and try not to echo too much of what my colleagues have already stated. I want to thank everybody who's came tonight. I know it can be intimidating to come and sit up here and talk before us. All those who emailed and some of you who called, I was able to get back to some of you, and I apologize, I have not gotten back to everyone who's reached out to me through the last week or so. I think we all know that we're in a bit of a housing crisis here. I'm not going to belabor that point or kick that point very much. And I think we know that building housing, as was stated here and by the mayor and I think others, that more helps out and has a positive ripple on all levels of housing need. And one of our responsibilities is to try to work to solve that in our community in the best ways that we possibly can. We don't get to pick the projects that come in front of us. The projects come that are available and seem to make sense in the, in the marketplace. And our job is to try to meet the needs of the community from a housing perspective. I'm supportive of this development. I'm not going to calm anybody's fears tonight with anybody. Anything I'm going to say, I know that. I'm a homeowner. My neighborhood's changing. I got fears about what's going on there. We're doing what we can to, to be supportive and work with the town and what's going on there as well. But I do want to echo something that the mayor said, and I think it's worth repeating and emphasizing here, is that our responsibility is to ensure that what is promised here and the work that's being promised to screen and isolate and separate and all of the things that we're seeing tonight, that all those promises are made good on. I'm sure there's, I appreciate and respect good intent and some of the changes that were made. And I know staff's been working a lot on this project or proposal for quite a while. But Mayor, I agree that it's up to us and staff to, to make sure that all of the, the things that are in here and that the negative concerns from the neighbors in Collie Ridge that we're hearing about are minimized to the greatest extent that we possibly can. Thank you.
Further on this item, again, we're just voting on item 10. I'm sorry, you had a chance to speak. No, the, no, the commenting is closed, sir. Just sit down. No, please sit down. Please, please sit down. Please sit down. Sir, you're out of order. Please sit down. Sir, you're out of order. Would you please leave? We're voting on item 10. Is there further discussion on that item? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
That item is approved. Item 11 is a resolution approving the Collie Ridge subdivision amended preliminary subdivision plan.
Second.
Second. Is there discussion or questions on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. Item 12 is a resolution conditionally approving the Essex PUD preliminary development plan.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
That resolution is approved as well. We have three items of new business tonight. The first is a resolution supporting Connect Transit sale of 104 East Oakland Avenue to Home Sweet Home Ministries for a non-congregant shelter project. Move approval.
Second.
Mayor Kuz, thank you, and council, thank you. This particular agenda item wasn't necessarily on my radar until a week ago. The city of Bloomington took action. The proposed development or the posed, proposed initiative relates specifically to property owned by Connect Transit and a proposal by Home Sweet Home Ministries. So really, of course, it's not in the town of Normal, and it's nothing that we ordinarily would take a position on. However, the city of Bloomington did take a position and adopted an ordinance in support of the initiative and asked the town of Normal to consider a similar ordinance, or, excuse me, resolution. This proposed resolution, I present to you with excitement. I, I think if you look closely at the resolution, it is, what we're asking council to adopt is a resolution seeking Connect Transit's thoughtful consideration of disposing of their property, which is at 104 East Oakland Avenue in Bloomington to Connect Transit. Connect Transit made a presentation to the, or, my goodness, to Home Sweet Home Ministries. Home Sweet Home Ministries made a presentation to Connect Transit a few months back. The board of Connect Transit has been considering a partnership and an arrangement with this initiative. And the city of Bloomington held public forums, then took action, adopting a resolution. And so, of course, this evening, we present to you this proposed resolution. I'm not prepared to go into a whole lot of discussion or detail about the unhoused situation. Council may have been up to speed on various media reporting of the situation, including the public forums that were held by the city of Bloomington. As stated, the proposed resolution asks that Connect Transit Board give thoughtful consideration to the transfer of 104 East Oakland to Home Sweet Home Ministries. Thank you.
Questions or comments on this? Mr. Byers?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll, I'll just be very brief. I, I think that the, the proposal would be a, a pretty significant improvement, I think, from the, the current situation on the property, both for the individuals that are unhoused and just more broadly for the community. So I'm supportive.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. Item 14 is a resolution in support of the town of Normal becoming certified by the Bird City, Illinois program. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. We have a motion to adjourn to executive session, but before doing so, are there council comments? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of collective bargaining. Submove.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session.